Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the Temple City Council and the City of Temple Benefits Trust. For today, Thursday, July 16th, current time it's 2:00 P.M. And I believe that we are starting with Mr. Raymore. And the Employee Benefits.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for your time today. So I'm here today to talk about our employee benefits for the upcoming year of 21.
This is it right here. Try it?
Can you find it to go on the side now?
Yeah. Well, I got the.
Oh, forget it to the.
It's not, it doesn't give it a power.
Okay, so the benefit types that we have are listed here. So they include medical, education, coverage, dental, operation, basic life, and BBT, long-term, short-term disability products, flexible spending, healthcare, savings accounts, and we have a COBRA plan. And then we have several supplementary plans including accident, hospital, and getting in cancer. And we also have an employee assistance program. So for the medical plans, this coming benefit year will still have the same plan signs that we have. There's no change there, no change in recommendation for the vendor, so the Baylor Scott &amp; White. We went out for RFP back last year in April. The plans that we offer, we have two high deductible plans and two nation, two network plans, sorry. One is a Baylor Scott &amp; White preferred network and one is a nationwide plan. The only change there is currently the nationwide plan is administered through Cigna and that'll be changed into Aetna. And that's due to some network issues and limitations that we have. We are happy to announce that we were able to negotiate a reduction in the employer cost for this coming year, which is going to be a savings of over $1,400,000 for the employer. And that we are very excited that we're not going to be increasing our employee premiums. So those are the same ones that we have coming up. We have a one-year guaranteed rate cap for next year of 6%. For our dental plans, we're not recommending any changes. We'll be recommending staying with United Concordia. We'll have the same two plans. Again, that was a product that went through RFP last April. There is no increase in the employer or employee premiums for the upcoming year. And we have one year remaining on a rate guarantee that we will be able to use again next year. We're excited to see. On our vision plan, we're not recommending changing. This is standard, who we have today, that's one plan option. There's no increase to employees' power of employer this year. There was another RFP from last year and we still have one year remaining on that rate guarantee after this year, so. The basic life and supplemental life and accidental death and disability policies, we're recommending staying the same with those, which is the vendor of standard and the same plans. We did RFP last year in April on those. We still have two years remaining on a rate guarantee for these products. For the disability insurance, that's our short-term and long-term, we recommend staying with same vendor, which is standard. Another RFP from last year, no rate increase for the employee or the employer. And we have still two years remaining on this one rate guarantee. Our flexible spending health savings account, COBRA, this one currently is with disability benefits. We did go through RFP in May of this year. And we are recommending changing vendors to connect your care. This will result in us having a 6% reduction in our administrative costs and also enhanced customer service because we will have our own assigned customer service agent. And we were very excited to see that they offered us a five-year rate guarantee. We also offer these additional insurances on the screen, which are accident, critical illness, hospital, disability, and cancer plans. These are through Guardian Life Insurance Company. We did an RFP on those back in 2018 and we're not recommending any changes for this coming year. The rates are also staying the same. Our employee assistance program is currently through UT Health. And so we went through RFP on this one in May of this year. We are recommending moving that to do OCAP. They've offered us an 8% reduction in our costs, but again, a great, a great guarantee of five years. And we have enhanced offerings, additional counseling sessions and things like that for our employees. That's our benefits overview for the upcoming year, answering the questions that you might have.
It may not be a number you have in mind.
I don't have it on the top of my head. I know EAP is a rather low-cost annual for us and I believe the cost difference was about $1,500 per year on that one. On the other one, I don't have that number in my mind.
Was it suddenly 8% or what, or which one? About 6%?
6%. So there was an overall reduction to Scott &amp; White Health Plan rate? And employee benefits rate?
Employee premiums are staying the same and there's approximately $1,400,000.
What is the magic?
Now, if there are any other questions up to this time? Benefits trust, are there any other questions out there? You can go ahead and pick one up there. All right, so this time I'll entertain a motion from the Temple Employee Benefits Trust to approve benefits that were laid out by Ms. Raymore. I have a motion by Councilmember Walker, seconded by Councilmember Rattles. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Walker.
Aye.
Councilmember Walker.
Aye.
And potential rattles.
All right, thank you. This time I'll adjourn to the City of Temple Employee Benefits Trust meeting and now convene the workshop for the Temple City Council. First item is to discuss, as maybe needs to be regular meeting, agenda items toward that meeting. Councilmembers, if you have anything you want to quickly discuss. Diane? All right, we'll move on to number two, which is to discuss the cemetery operations option. Ms. Raymore?
So a little bit of background on today's conversation. Council may recall that in 2018, SACT was approached by the Volunteer Board. A few of the Volunteer Board members of the Temple Cemetery Company, which is the, was the official name of the organization that at that time owned and operated Hillcrest Cemetery. Hillcrest is about just under 70 acres cemetery. It's an historic cemetery. The first part burial can be traced back to the late 1870s, but it is also an active cemetery with active burials. The city had been providing the Volunteer Board financial support for operation of the cemetery since 2011. At the direction of council, SACT did an evaluation of the financial position of the cemetery and their operational protocols and ultimately brought back a recommendation to the city council and the council approved a transfer agreement with the Temple Cemetery Company that allowed the city to take over ownership and operation of that cemetery. That transfer date was effective May 1st of last year. So now, since that time, the city has owned and operated the cemetery, including managing the sale of plots, burials, et cetera. There are two other smaller cemeteries that are proximate to Hillcrest, New Hope and Seven Star. We have been approached about the possibility of also taking over these cemeteries. We've received several calls and communication from various citizens concerned about the maintenance of these two cemeteries. However, unlike Hillcrest, New Hope and Seven Star, we believe they don't have clear owners. So there is an active Volunteer Board that's managing the cemetery. So there's, there's not an evaluation, a negotiation process that we could go through with the board like we did with Hillcrest. Kevin Beavers, our Parks Director, at my request, has done some initial research on those two cemeteries as well as the potential cost of the city maintaining those cemeteries. And we believe that it would cost us approximately $8,000 in a year to contract the building of the cemeteries. So here are the locations. As I mentioned, Hillcrest is about 70 acres. Just to the north is Miller Park. And then to the east of Miller Park and to the north of Hillcrest is New Hope Cemetery. And then to the east of Hillcrest is Seven Star Cemetery. To our knowledge, New Hope Cemetery, there are active burials occurring at New Hope Cemetery. There is a gentleman who performs burials there. The owner of record of the cemetery, in our research through Belcad, is a resident who is now deceased. The Belcad information indicates that he had a quitclaim title to the cemetery. So as, as you may know, a quitclaim deed essentially means that if someone, if somebody had an interest in a piece of property, they're conveying it to the other person or the other entity. But it doesn't mean that there was any interest to convey. So it's, it's not a very strong ownership record, I guess, if you will. That's definitely not, I'm only a first-year law student, so it's definitely not legal terminology. And then Seven Star is actually in the U.P. Railroad right of way, so it is not a separate branch of property. The Seven Star Cemetery is currently being maintained by a volunteer organization. I believe they are connected to the Juneteenth Celebration Committee. The cemetery is currently, Seven Star Cemetery is currently in good condition because that volunteer group is doing a great job maintaining it. There are, it is a full cemetery, there are no active burials. New Hope Cemetery, on the other hand, is not in good condition. It is the cemetery that we get the most citizen calls about because it is, it is poorly maintained and there is really nobody maintaining that cemetery. The volunteer group that currently maintains Seven Star has let the city know, though, that in the, going forward in the future, for the long term, they are not going to be able to continue to provide those services. So if they stop, the cemetery will be an area of public safety concern as well, as is New Hope currently. So while they're, while the kind of the path that we took for Hillcrest, I don't think is really an option in this situation. There is a section of the Health and Safety Code that has a provision that we could consider if council would like staff to explore the option of taking over the possession and control of the cemetery. So it's in Section 713 of the Health and Safety Code allows the city that has a cemetery within its jurisdiction to adopt a resolution that allows us to take possession and control of a cemetery if you make findings that the cemetery threatens during days of public health safety, come under lawfare. Under this particular code, municipality is required to provide notice and have essentially a 60-day comment period from that notice to, and also to develop a plan that would address any, the need to remove or repair any fences, walls, or other improvements that are needed to the cemetery, including straightening and resetting of any memorial stones or embellishments that are a threat or danger to public health or safety, and then take the proper steps to restore and maintain the premises in a orderly and decent condition. So the, if we wanted to move forward under this code, we would need to develop that plan and provide notice, allow the 60-day comment period. We would need to provide notice by mail to any person that's shown on the records in the county clerk's office to have an interest in the cemetery, to the Texas Historical Commission, and then also post a notice in the municipal daily telegram as well. And then after that period, the city council could consider adopting a resolution that has us taking possession and control of the cemetery. One importable, one important note, portable, one important note about the section in the Health and Safety Code that allows the city to have this option. It does have a restriction that additional burial spaces cannot be offered for sale in the future. So once you, once a city takes possession and control of a cemetery in this manner, no additional lots can be sold. It is our understanding that we can still honor any, we can still allow burials in new locks that have previously been sold that have a record of that, but we going forward cannot continue active burial or not to sell a plot in the cemetery. And then the other criteria that we would need to follow if we chose to go this route is we have to, the cemetery has to remain open to the public. So.
New Hope doesn't need a year for that. I don't think.
So that is our understanding is that there is, you know, you can even see in this, in this aerial that probably half of the, of the boundaries are, most likely, there are no burials there. It's a wooded area. It is, the gentleman who does burials currently indicates that there, there's more room in the main part. Of course, we don't have any records, so it would be difficult to know for sure what the, what the potential additional capacity there is. There, at some point, there was a Volunteer Board that managed the cemetery, I believe in the 70s. Maybe they dissolved. We talked to some people who previously were on, on the board and the best indication that we can get is that their records are most likely lost at times. So we, we would be unlikely to get any records for the cemetery. But again, even if there are, even if there is available space there, if you go the route of taking over, controlling the public safety because you couldn't sell plots for burial, that would be a restriction.
It is, and for Seven Star, that's fine because it's, for New Hope, we do have some additional space. Is there a different way for the city to take control of it other than Health and Safety? Do they pay tax in them or?
It's a tax exemption.
Any taxes?
Out of curiosity, when you do get phone calls about, I guess, knowing, you need to know, yes, soon, when they go over to cite whoever, I mean, who do they cite and who ends up mowing to take care of that properties of the city?
It's just not being maintained right now.
So we just let it grow?
We have.
I was just curious if the city, after receiving a number of phone calls and there is no solid ownership to cite, oh, did the city go ahead and know that?
Phone calls are with family members who, maybe they're buried there and they knew that of the city and are concerned when they come to visit, that it's nobody.
Yeah. I was just curious, curious.
That's why I'm making a note.
If it gets done, it's just.
Are there, are there headstones and memorials that are in disrepair that we would then be responsible for repairing?
It is possible. If you, if there, so today, what I'm, what I'm seeking is some direction from council. If this is something that you even want staff to explore any further, we've done some basic introductory investigation, but we would have more work to do to develop that plan. That would be required to determine what, if any major repairs are needed. We would, under the Health and Safety Code, have to present that plan that would address any issues that pose a threat to health and safety, not necessarily any issues that are just aesthetic in nature, if you will. So that would be an additional step that would be to, before you took final action.
You'd feel like we should do one, I mean, none or both?
I.
Is that?
Yeah, so.
I drove by Seven Star yesterday and it was so nice. They really do a nice job.
Seven Star, again, Seven Star currently is in great condition because there's a very dedicated volunteer group that has taken on that. The concern that staff has is if and when that volunteer group can or, or does no longer maintain it, it will become in the same condition as we hope.
I know that the volunteers that are out there are of an age. In fact, one of the, tell me, Mr. Houston just passed last week, he was 80 something. So they're getting of an age and they're not really physically able to keep doing that for the time.
And they want, if they ask the city to please step up.
The same with Seven Star is amazing, but to make a decision on, to take it over. It can't bury anymore people there. It's full. New Hope is intriguing because it still has like land. Take it under that state code, it didn't do anything with it, but it didn't. And then it just seems to me that it fits naturally with the rest of the cemetery component. And if it were to be apart, the rest of the cemetery would become a, that would be a benefit of their amount. Because you can't use the burials in the future as much to, to the city per se, other than just maintaining.
It, and it would be extremely challenging. At, at least the, probably the area that's wooded would be, I would feel more confident. But we would be extremely challenged, not having any records, to feel comfortable selling plots in the cemetery or engaging in burial. I mean, we have a lot of challenges in that area at Hillcrest, which we have some pretty decent records as it goes for a cemetery that's been around since 1870. So that would be significant concern from an operations standpoint. I think that there's probably a lot more space in Hillcrest that would be more, would be operationally less challenging to provide a burial state. Kathy, I, we didn't talk a lot about this when we met at the staff level, but I, I guess the city could pursue eminent domain?
Well, I was just thinking that the problem is that it's still a priority. That's one thing I was just trying to work through.
If a cemetery is considered a public purpose, I mean, in domain law, then you could probably pursue domain, but that's the only option, other option, other than this Health and Safety Code that comes signed for me.
Well, Kim, you, is there a possibility pursuing something in terms of no owner, abandoned property?
That doesn't usually apply, maybe talking to the estate.
Right, yeah. Abandoned cars, abandoned bicycles, et cetera. Got you.
I think probably that the decision to possibly take over these other two cemeteries is made whenever a cemetery is pressed. You know, I don't think you can say, taking Hillcrest without.
Sure. We, we opened up the, the potential.
I think probably, I think my advice would be to have staff go ahead and move forward with, you know, whether it's given a domain or whether it's a public purpose. Like either way, we just have staff move forward. It's the ultimate goal, we take it over. Yeah.
What else exists, not in proximity, but because we then assume, assuming we then own three cemeteries, what else is going to come, come around and say, you now have three, how about taking those two?
I'm, I'm only aware, so one, one thing I didn't mention in the restrictions is it doesn't apply to either of these, but that, that Health and Safety Code doesn't provide for taking over a, I think it's, I think it's listed as a family cemetery or a perpetual care cemetery. So I don't know if there are family cemeteries in the community, but that wouldn't be an option under this particular code. Is it by the parking complex? Yeah, so, so there's one, do you know what that's called? There's one other cemetery that may qualify under this Health and Safety Code. We would have to look into it a little bit further, which I certainly could.
But it's not contiguous.
It's, it's not, no. And I, I don't know if it, I, I don't know really much about it. So I'm, we could certainly do some research like we've done here to get some basic information to present, but I'm, so I'm not sure if it's a family cemetery or something more extensive.
But off the cuff, we kind of think there's only one that may come around if we take two more.
I think there, I'm only aware of one other possibility, but not even sure if that qualifies under this. But it, but that's the only one that I'm even personally aware of.
How did Kevin come up with the $20,000 mowing cost when we don't know whether there's memorials that have to be, you know, that you have to zoom around, making it harder to mow, et cetera?
We, we took our contracted mowing company, we guys helped press to the sites and they helped us with that estimate. So it's not that we don't know that there are memorials there. We just haven't done any detailed work on, given the level of repair to do same. So the $20,000 is a number that I feel for the ongoing annual cost. There might be some additional one-time expenses that you would need to do to make some repairs. If there's something that's in a poor condition that threatens health and safety, you may have some initial one-time cost that staff still needs to, would need to do a plan for. But as, in terms of the ongoing annual maintenance, I feel like $20,000 is a conservative number that would, might be accomplish the ongoing mowing needs at those two facilities.
And another thing to help bring up, what else? The customer waiting to be sent to this area, it's shot with trees there, there's a floodwater, floodway. All there is, like, not usable. Or to be said.
It just becomes or is interesting, attractive, peaceful parkland associated with cemetery.
Yeah, just keep in mind that this particular section of the Health and Safety Code doesn't, doesn't, it's not going to convey the city ownership of the property, just control and possession. If that makes sense.
Yeah. What are the, how does it, where, what is, how does insurance begin to, city insurance?
I would think that we would provide any coverage under our, our riskful coverage that we have, just like we had at Hillcrest, similar level of coverage.
Even though we, we wouldn't be the owners?
I, I think we can do that and it would be a nominal cost.
So proceed. Correct.
When specifically under the Health and Safety Code or would you like some additional information on the potential for another option?
Both. So we're saying both options, right?
Mm-hmm.
Something that would allow for the possible sale of plots later.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, very good. Moving on to item number three is to discuss substantial screen requirements. Go.
So we're going to be talking about utility screening. We're talking electric substations, lift stations, why not? You'll recall that our strategic plan identifies places and spaces as a focus area for us to provide beautiful spaces and unique experiences for our citizens and patrons of Temple, Texas. We have a significant number of utility projects, both City of Temple and franchise utility projects that are on the horizon. And in keeping with the spirit of that strategic plan and trying to make Temple a place that you truly do love to call home, staff has some recommendations for utility improvements involving gas line regulating stations, electrical energy generating plants, electrical energy substations, sewage and water pumping stations, so that's a lift station or a pump station associated with sewage and water, and sewage and water treatment plants. And what you'll keep in mind here is that these will apply to new facilities moving forward. It doesn't necessarily mean that you would have to go back and improve existing facilities. The recommendation is for screening surrounding those facilities that we just talked about. And in order to comply, they would be required to have either a precast concrete fence, sometimes it's referred to as a fencecrete, or a masonry wall that's eight feet in height. And that requirement would take place if those facilities are located within 1,000 feet of a residential zoning district or a platted residential subdivision. So what does that really mean basically? What you see here on the top picture is a utility, electric utility substation. And the standard screening or standard fencing that goes around that is a chain link fence with a barbed wire top on it. What we're proposing is that in lieu of that chain link fence, there would be a masonry wall or a precast concrete fence constructed around the facility, like you see on the bottom picture there. This is the same, same type of thing for a gas line regulating station. So what you see in the top picture, again, in the background, you can see that chain link fence with the razor wire. On the bottom picture, that's actually a concrete, precast concrete fence. That one is in Podo, I believe, just south of us. Here you see something that we've done similarly. Top left is a Friars Creek Lift Station here in town. And then on the bottom right there, you see the Shell Ford Lift Station that was recently constructed. And one thing that you notice here is when you look at that as a passerby, you don't see anything inside of that facility. So it's completely hidden from public view and only those who are needing to go into that facility and need to access that facility will know what's within confines of that station. Obviously, we do consider costs when we look at these types of things and you have to know what you're getting into. You see here numbers for chain link with barbed wire. It's about $30 a foot, $40 a foot for a wood privacy type of fencing. And a little precast concrete fence, typically called a fencecrete fence, is about $100 a foot. On the far right-hand column there, what you see is the cost for a 200-foot section of fence. And that's what you would typically see for a 50-by-50 utility station. It's going to get a little bit larger for, say, an electric utility substation. But when we look at lift stations or a gas line regulating station, that type of thing, 50-by-50 pad would typically be sufficient to house those types of improvements. So there is a cost difference associated with it. However, when you look at it on the scale of the cost of those types of improvements on a whole, it's really not a substantial cost associated with that as well. What we're looking for today out of this discussion is just the thoughts and feelings from council on if you feel this is something that we would like to move forward with. If you do, then we could potentially bring that to P and Z in August and then a first reading in August as well for a final adoption in early September, I believe it is. It's also important to note when you talk about our franchise utilities that as you go south in particular and you look at their service areas, Encore, Atmos, both have facilities in Podo for sure. But Williamson County area all has similar screening standards for these types of substations. So it's not that, we wouldn't be asking them to do something that they're not already doing within our service areas and they're already doing in very, very close neighbor communities. So we're not asking for something that's completely out of the question. In this type of case, we've looked at it on our utility improvements as well and feel that it adds good value to the community. So we would be comfortable moving forward with our city improvements as well. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about it or entertain any discussion.
Absolutely. I mean, I was wondering, can we also require them to go back in some of the others?
It gets a little more difficult when you start talking about going back. What we would have is if you saw a significant modification to that, that item, that we would, at that time, require the screening to be updated as well. And typically, we would look at like a 50% of the total value for substantial improvement.
And we're utilizing the neighborhood, so, you know, that would really make a difference.
If this type of standard does help us in our Ferguson Park neighborhood planning, we identified that substation as one, and we would like to see a little bit better quality screening around that substation. And if we have this standard in place for the city as a whole, it does help us move towards working to get that screening updated as well.
So this will come back to council in September, you said?
It would come back to council. Actually, I think I just spoke, we looked at the P and Z timings. Yeah. So the final reading would be last meeting in August.
So would we be able to have this in effect by the time?
Yes.
Would you add these landscaping requirements to any of the other neighboring communities that have landscaping requirements?
Typically, what you see is when you start talking about the landscaping requirements, if you back off to landscaping screening, then you relax the fence type of screening. So if you have a higher standard for fencing, like a masonry type of fence, then there's typically a more relaxed standard for landscaping around it. Or if you have a chain link, you could have an increased landscape standard that would block that. But the idea there being just that you're trying to screen what the ICs as you were getting.
We can't. There's no way to combine screening and landscaping.
You absolutely can do it. It's within your purview. It's just not, it's not typical to see that because you're, it's kind of a double whammy on the cost.
Sure, sure. And then there's maintenance on top of it, the labor.
You don't want to see, there's nothing better than telling people, oh.
If you sell concrete. Then you could also suggest that, though, as an option.
Oh, sure.
What some cities do as well is they may offer a combination of, called a landscape farm, where you kind of build up the earth around that substation so that it's, you know, six or eight feet higher than the station itself. And then you have something escaping on top of that. And so that would be something that would be in lieu. I would advise at this point, though, that we consider something like that as an option for a variance on a case-by-case basis rather than trying to build that.
I agree with you a follow-up. Just make a quick. Moving on to item number four is to receive a presentation from Ms. Raymore on the General Government Market Study.
Mayor Temple, while Alex pointed out presentation that Tara's giving, I just wanted to give a few opening remarks. So council will recall that for the last several years, we've had a practice that has allowed us to study our market competitiveness on salaries by really approaching it in a two-phase system. So we have been doing public safety in one year and then the alternating year. I need to work on my words today. Alternating year, you look at general government, which is essentially all of the other positions other than those that are related to sworn police and fire. And so you'll recall, I'm sure, that last year we studied the Public Safety Compensation Plan and we made some adjustments to that plan based on our findings. This year, we took a look at the general government plan. And I've asked Tara to give you an overview of what that study found and what she would recommend in terms of how to potentially implement those findings.
Thank you, nice to see you all again. I'm going to copy David and try it this way. So as Fran said, this year we did the General Government Market Study or Compensation Study. So what do we look at with that? We look at the market median minimum for each position title and the grades that our competitors are using. So what is the minimum salary at the market median there? We also look at our current pay chart design, just as we did last year with the civil service, to see, you know, is our design what we would like it to be? Is it the best we think it can be, including the structure of that? And we also look at what we call ad pay or certification pay. Supplemental pay is another word for that. This is one of our strategic initiatives as a high-performing organization that helps us to attract and retain talented employees. So these are our market peers. It's the same group that we use for the civil service market study. So we're using the same group of peers each time that we're going through the process. So the compensation findings and recommendations, what we found is on average that we're approximately 7% below the market median minimum on our positions, meaning that not every position is behind 7%, but on average, when we go through the list of all of our positions, that's where we're at. Our lowest full-time hourly in our market is $12.60 per hour. And then our pay chart, when we looked at it, we felt that maybe it should be updated just so that it's easier to find positions on and to search through whenever we're trying to look at something. And then also our grading system, we looked at that as well and determined that we needed to do an overhaul of the grading system. The recommendations that we have are market adjustments, again, because we're behind market. And the recommendation is the greater of 2% or the minimum of the new grade. The total cost of that would be approximately $1.6 million, and that is broken down by fund below. We also recommend that we increase our lowest full-time hourly rate to 1270 per hour. The reason that ours is 1270 and the market is 1260 is because when we looked at our positions that would fall into that grade, that lowest full-time equivalent grade, the market median for that was 1270 for our position titles that would be placed in that grade. And then again, we're recommending that we update both our design and structure of our pay chart. So this is a pay chart summary. Right now, we have 301 position titles. There's a total of 30 grades. We have a range, that's your min to max for each of your grades, of 50 to 65%. So it varies, it's not consistent with every grade. And our current lowest full-time hourly position is $9.86 an hour. We're proposing in the new chart that we would have 244 position titles with 31 grades and that our min to max would be a consistent 55% range for each grade. And then that our lowest full-time hourly, again, would be 1270 per hour.
Could you explain the min to max?
That's, when you have a grade, so I'll just give you a number. Let's say it's grade number 101. The minimum salary for that pay in that grade range is the minimum. And then the maximum pay that someone can earn during that, if they're in that pay grade for their career, that's the maximum. So your min to max is your minimum salary, your maximum salary per grade.
The grade she shows up there is the percent difference between those two.
Yes, 55% from the very bottom to the very top of the grade.
So right now-
Stay in the same grade, about $15.
Yeah, they would go up that 55% if the grades never moved again.
So right now, we're at the 50 to 65% minimum max, and you're proposing the 55%.
That's correct. Yes.
And all Tara's saying there is that in our 30 grades, some of our grades have a spread, another way of saying that is a spread. So some, the difference between the minimum and max is 50%, but some it's 65%. It's not consistent, and we would recommend the consistent percentage for all the grades.
That's correct. So that's why we're recommending just one.
And the position titles, are there just too many?
Yes, so what happens when you go through the process? And some of them, for example, it's the same title, and I'll just make one up, like widget maker part-time and widget maker. Well, we don't need to really classify it as whether it's part-time or full-time as a title. It's just a widget maker, right? And it would have the same minimum hour, it's just the number of hours that you work is designated by whether you are part-time or full-time. So some of them were duplicates like that and others were just titles that could be combined, where they, they were positions that were very much alike that needed to be the same.
That's how we went from 301 to 244.
That's correct.
This is not at all proposing elimination of individuals within the organization. It's just saying, like, maybe somebody's title was office clerk and somebody's title was office technician, and they really do the same thing. Let's just pick one title.
Correct, so it's a combination sometimes of positions into one title.
Well, someone was doing the same position overtime and their longevity pay, in the same position, no promotions, their longevity pay got them past the min-max. Is that something that could possibly happen?
The longevity pay doesn't count as part of the min-max rule. That's not calculated into that. That's just their salary.
But if for any reason they do, you know, if they get to the top of their grade, for example, and you do a performance pay or a COLA adjustment, that employee can't go over the maximum. So they would be limited to, that maximum does matter because they, their base salary generally can't be over the maximum.
What do you do if that happened?
Historically, we provided it as a performance pay. We provided it in the form of a lump sum, so we're one year. It doesn't affect their base pay, but they get it as a one-time payment.
When you look at compensation adjustments, what do you call when you move the, you have a min and a max, but then you move? You can have your performance, you can have your, our markets are going to take the whole scale of the performance you gave.
Yes. And so just because you have a min and max today and say it's $10 min per hour and 20 maximum, that's a made-up number, but, and then a market adjustment happens five years from now, it moves the chart, then that 10 and that 20 is going to go up. So that, and that employee that's in there, their max would go up at that time. So this is just an idea, our recommended chart. So we have our current design up top. That's what our pay chart looks like. So they're grouped by pay grade over on the left is what it would look like. And then over on the right is a list of the titles within that grade. We're proposing the design at the bottom because it's a more modern look. And it will be published in two ways. One method would be by grade, so you could go in and search all positions in the grade. And the other method would be by title alphabetically, where you could just find a position title you're looking for and go across and find the grade and the range quicker. So the ad pay findings and recommendations. We currently have ad pays for different certifications and licenses. Those not listed on the screen, we're not recommending making any changes to them, increasing, decreasing, eliminating, anything of that nature. The ones that are highlighted here is two that we don't currently offer but that are common in the market are standby pay and bilingual pay. So standby pay, the market average is $15 per day. We're recommending $15 per day, and that would be at a cost of around $104,000 a year if we implemented it. So what is standby pay? Standby pay, we have individuals, employees that are on-call. And they currently only- And they currently only get paid like if they're called in to work for something. But they're on call, maybe let's say for two days at a time. The whole time that they're on call and they're waiting to see if someone's going to call them, they're, they're limited in the things that they can do in their personal life because they have to be ready to go to work if they're called in. So the standby pay is a small piece of compensation that they would receive while they're waiting to potentially get a call, but maybe they don't. So they're standing by for a call. So that's $15 a day is what would be recommended. And that is basically what we're seeing in the market that they're giving for that kind of situation. Yes, right now there's nothing, only if they get called in, then they get.
An example of a position that is standby is in the utility warehouse. So if there's a water sewer break on a weekend or overnight and a part is needed that's not available on the crew's truck, then a warehouse technician must come in to get that part to the crew so they can make the repair. So there's somebody on the staff that is standing by that weekend. And they are limited on, they have to stay within proximity to Temple. They can't have a beer, for example, those kinds of things. So it limits what, what they're able to do personally, even though they're not actively working those hours. They are, they are committed to coming in at a monthly notice. And so this would provide compensation for that commitment.
The second one, the bilingual pay. So the average is $75 a month. Different cities are doing it different ways with how they compensate. Some of them are giving a little more and it's that flat rate. Some are doing it based on the skill level. When I say based on level, our recommendation is 75 to $100 per month. So $75 would be the bilingual person who translates verbally throughout the city. And they're designated in their department to be the one that would translate when it's needed for verbal telephone calls, in-person customer visits. The higher end, the $100 per month would be that level two person who does the transcription of documents. Maybe transcribes an English document into another language such as Spanish for customer use or city use. So they have a little bit higher level of requirement for their skills, their bilingual skills. So there would be a process that they would go through testing and they would receive a certificate saying what level of proficiency they have. And then, of course, they still have to be designated by their department and then they would be eligible for this pay per month.
This would only be for physicians that had a job requirement or benefit for the bilingual. So just because you had that skill, that necessarily means that you qualify for the certification pay. You would have to be in a position that utilized that for city services. Does that make sense?
Yes. And the cost for that, based on, again, we gathered data from various departments in which positions we thought, you know, might qualify for that. It would be $16,000 annually estimated. The item over on the right is an expansion of something we currently have, but it's not in every position in every department. And that is shift differential. We're positions that work the second and third shifts, meaning they work that evening shift or the overnight shift. So we would recommend, which we currently is the same rate, 25 to $50 per month, 25 for the second shift and $50 per month if they work that third shift. The cost of that annually would be $12,900. So an example of that is we offer the $25 to $50 allowance, for example, I believe at the water treatment plant, but we don't offer it to a facilities crew that might have an overnight shift or, you know, a second shift. So not every position in the city working those shifts currently gets it. So the recommendation would be to expand it and that cost of that one is $12,900 annually. And so that's, those are the items that we reviewed as part of the market study. I'm happy to answer any questions, follow-up. Thank you.
If I may just provide a few more comments that provide a little bit more perspective. So if the, if we get to a point where we implement the pay plan that's recommended based on these findings, there's a, there's right around 700 employees that are covered, if you don't remember, that's the amount of employees are in the civil service pay plan. Of those, about 60% would be under the minimum of the grade that was proposed for their position. And so that represents about 400 of our employees that would be under the new recommended grade. And of those, 300, around 300 are full-time employees and around 150 are part-time. So we would think so, forward part-time. And, and those employees that would be under the new proposed pay plan, they really represent our frontline workers. So 96% of those employees are hourly frontline workers. So that's really who we're talking about here with this, this pay plan adjustment. So it's our solid waste drivers, our water and wastewater technicians, our animal control officers, our maintenance workers, our custodians. Those are the types of physicians that would be primarily affected by this.
That's the 1.6.
I think that's enough. Do.
The 1.6 would be everybody.
The total estimated cost of implementing the pay plan adjustments that were presented by Tara, not including the ad pay, this is just the compensation adjustment. If you implemented it for a full fiscal year, it's just around the $1.6 million. And that's, that's including the salary part of that and then any ancillary adjustments that would be necessary to get aside. So I don't have the exact calculation of that, but the, and I can get it, but the vast majority of that would impact our frontline worker because that is who the study has found that are really more significantly behind market.
And that's clearly, or I'm assuming that's affecting retention.
It certainly has an impact. There are certain positions where we have definitely seen difficulties in attracting and then retaining qualified employees for those positions. And this, this adjustment, we believe would go a long way in helping.
Item number five is where I received a presentation on the fiscal year 2021 business plan, including but not limited to an overview of the proposed fiscal year 2021.
Thank you, Mayor. So as you recall, Council, a couple of weeks ago when we last met, I gave you my full presentation on the proposed 2021 business plan. And then I asked you to let me know if there's any topic or areas that you wanted to do a deeper dive on so that staff could present those. Mayor Davis asked that we do a deeper dive on and kind of narrow the focus into what's proposed in the annual budget portion and anything that would specifically affect fiscal year 2021. So the purpose of my presentation today is to get into, instead of the full eight years, to have a little bit more specific conversation about 2021. So we're, in that, we're going to focus on the FY21 annual budget, which adopts the 2021 financial plan. And then the capital plan for any projects or portions of projects that are recommended to be funded in 2021 versus the broader scope. So 20, just a general reminder, 2020 has been a challenging year. And we, we have seen the impacts of that in really all areas of our lives. I think, you know, the masks that we're wearing, everything that really our whole normal has shifted and changed. And that's, has also had an impact on the city's budget and on the proposed plan that we're presenting to you. So we have made some significant, as Council will recall, this is the second year that we have presented the budget in context of a broader business plan. And so last year we presented what we anticipated to be happening in 2021. We have made some significant adjustments to what we, what we included in the adopted FY, in the adopted business plan from last year to what we're proposing for you this year, just in response to the impacts from the pandemic. So the majority of our new service enhancements and our new initiatives have been shifted from FY 2021 to a future year. So much of what we presented last year that we were hoping to accomplish in 2021, most of those resources have been proposed in a future year. But there are some things that we are recommending in 2021 that I want to highlight for you. So in 20, you'll also probably recall that in 2020, you made a significant investment in upgrading our technology. We had some significant needs in keeping up with investment in technology to allow us to be a hyper performing organization. And we funded a lot of new systems or updates to systems. So we continue that focus in 2021. There's a few specific things in 2021 related to technology. We are recommending the replacement of our police and fire mobile data laptops. We recommend that that's, the life of those is four years, Tracy? Every four years or is it every five?
Four to five years.
Every four to five years, we need to replace those laptops. And FY 2021 is the year that we were scheduled to do that. We think that's important and we'd like to stay the course with that replacement program. We're also recommending that we replace a storage area network. And then if Council will recall that one of the new technology initiatives that you supported in the 2020 business plan was a new human resource information system. So we began that process this year, but that is a, you can ask Tracy and Tara and their team and Allen and his team, that is a massive undertaking. So the full, that we plan to have the new human resources system go live in January of 2021. And so most of the costs for that new system are being presented in 21. There was some startup cost built into the 2020 budget, but the full cost of that program will be represented in 2021. Council will also recall, and this actually goes back a couple of years, to your investment in a cloud-based evidence management storage system for our police department, Axon, if you remember that name. So this is a system that has the technology connected to the police department's TASER devices, their body worn cameras, their in-car video system cameras. And so we have been stepping in that investment into the operating budget and that is fully implemented in 2021. We also, as related to technology, in 2021 are recommending the system database administrator position that will be tasked with developing the comprehensive cybersecurity program for the city. This is actually a position that was in a, in a later year in the original plan and we're recommending accelerating that to this year. This is a need that we, it is fairly significant and we would like to consider the acceleration of that item. So as it relates to facilities, specifically in 2021, the budget allocates approximately $11 million towards facility improvements. There's really three main projects that are recommended as part of that allocation. It's the renovation to the first floor of the municipal building and then the new recycling center and expansion of the service center facility. So those projects are recommended to move forward in 2021. As it relates to capital and equipment investment, we continued the focus on our replacement program and making sure that our capital equipment is maintained and replaced. So we have allocated in your proposed budget, just under $3 million in capital equipment purchases and replacements in FY 2021. And this represents replacements such as police cars, but also equipment for our utility crews. So a broad range of replacements there.
So facilities is 11 million, airports is 3 million, but I don't think you can use a number of technologies.
Sure, I can definitely provide that. So the, the implementation cost for the HRIS system that are built, that are additional cost for FY 2021 is just over a quarter a million, so 256,500. Axon is an additional 142, I mean around numbers, Tracy hates when I do that, but that's my style. 142, just under 142,000 for Axon. What else did I talk about?
Laptops.
Laptops is around 500,000, I believe.
The mobile data laptops, 430,000.
430,000. The storage area network is. As it relates to employer of choice, as you just received the presentation from our director of HR regarding the general government compensation study, there is funding in FY 2021 proposed to implement the general government compensation study. And then the budget does include the continued funding for our health benefit information. And as you received that presentation as the benefit trust earlier today, that actual, that number actually. But we still remain, maintain that commitment to our employees to provide those important things. As it relates to the category places and spaces or the focus area of places and spaces, one of the things that FY, that we recommend continuing as part of FY 2021, it's our focus on neighborhood planning. So the FY 2021 budget does provide funding for the four districts that are scheduled to be, that the strategic neighborhood plan is scheduled to be developed for. And that, right now, based on our, our council adopted schedule, we're looking at Midtown, Jackson Park, Garden and Easttown district as being the four districts that we work with in 2021. So the funding for those plans remains in the FY 2021 budget.
What, what dollar cost do y'all put on, or what dollar cost do one of those plans do?
Generally, each of them is around just under 100,000. You actually have one on your budget, I'm not on your budget, on your agenda tonight. It's the Mellair district, the last one for 2020. I believe it's just under $100,000 for that one. And that is pretty standard, what we've seen. 92. We are recommending, the, the original business plan recommended that in 2021, we develop that strategy on homelessness and we are recommending that we continue forward with that plan. We are recommending to continue in 2021, to continue to leverage our community development block grant funds to assist us with the implementation of our efforts to build strong neighborhoods. You will actually hear a fairly detailed presentation from Nancy on this afternoon in your regular Council meeting regarding the city budget plan. But those, those ones are still recommended to be forwarded. And that will include programs, the housing improvement program, the affordable rental housing, solution oriented coding compliance, our crime prevention program and demolition program. In the category of smart growth, we maintain our commitment to fund the operations of the Temple United Development Corporation to provide investment attraction marketing and incentive negotiation services to the city of Temple. This allows us to continue to meet the demands for current service. And in order to meet the demands for projected growth and development, it's really critical. it's really critical that we continue to invest in expanding our tax base. And TDC is a strong partner in that effort, so we recommend continuing that commitment. Of course, the, the council knows that the city is in the midst of implementing the largest capital improvement program in the history of our community. And to date, I've never had to give a presentation where I can't say that and it'd be accurate because every, every time I update this chart, it just keeps getting bigger. So that's, I haven't had to back down on that statement quite yet. So, so right now, as of the end of the last quarter, we had 266 million dollars of projects underway. The financial plan, the full eight-year plan has another 560 million. And I want to highlight some of the specifics that are in, that are funded for 2021. So in mo, in the category of mobility, again, just as a reminder, the capital plan includes the ninth year of the original ten-year mobility capital improvement program or the transportation capital improvement program. And it also recommends an expansion of the current program from just under 150 million dollars to just over 170 million. This would allow us to add a couple of projects that have been identified as high priority needs. But specifically in 2021, the projects that are recommended in the capital plan are the construction of Canyon Creek and the Blackland Extension, the reconstruction of Little River Road, the reconstruction and expansion of Poison Oak, the reconstruction and expansion of Kedley Roads, phases three and four, which are the last two phases of Kedley Road. Outer Loop West, phase one, which is the phase that begins at, Poison Oak and goes, is that right? I'm getting myself confused. Two third to, about some, somewhere 200 and something feet. Yeah. And so it's, it's, it's about, I think, 200 to 300 feet south of Poison Oak that it, that that phase terminates. North, North P Ridge, phase one, South P Ridge. And then we also have an allocation of around 2.5 million dollars for pavement preservation, which is our overlay and reconstruction program of existing infrastructure. And we also have a placeholder for implementation of our neighborhood plans.
Does pavement preservation include sidewalks or is it just roads?
That's just roads. Yes, ma'am. The annual budget also recommends the development of the Mobility Master Plan in FY 2021. That will help us, that'll help guide our future investments in transportation infrastructure. So we recommend that we continue to move forward with that. As it relates to the utility program, the overall plan shows 200 and almost 280 million dollars in investment in our water and wastewater utilities. Specifically in 2021, we have several water line improvements that are recommended. So you can see those on the screen. I'm not going to read those individually unless you want me to. They are recommended for construction unless otherwise noted. There are a few projects that we are starting, that are recommending to start design and/or right-of-way on, and then a construction is in a future year. But the majority of those are actually scheduled for construction in 2021. Water treatment and storage-related projects. We are recommending the rehab of a clarifier at our water treatment plant, the rehabilitation of the Apache elevated storage tank. And then we are recommending that we begin design on the ground storage at State Highway 317 and design of the Everheart elevated storage tank is recommended to begin in 2021. On the wastewater treatment side, we are recommending that we begin design of an expansion to the Dozier wastewater treatment plant and implement the construction of phase two of the I-Flash train system at the Temple Belton plant, which it is my understanding that that project is related to BODs. I'm getting really good at BODs.
Would you remind us what BODs are?
Bio-oxygen demand.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I remember. That's number three. Yes. We were looking for earlier on the storage area. 226,000 annual.
Is that even coming back in town? Have all of this paper that I didn't come back to. And then wastewater lines, we do have one fairly significant wastewater line recommended for construction. It's the Williamson Creek Interceptor. Council will recall that Williamson Creek, in addition to Bird Creek and Knob Creek, are the three really large wastewater line projects that we have in some form of design and construction as part of the plan. And so Williamson Creek, one will be scheduled for construction in 2021. And then pursuing the right-of-way needs for a wastewater extension needed at 317. We have funding for the construction of two wastewater projects that are going to be accomplished through council through developer, developer participation agreements. And so that's for wastewater extension, including a lift station in the Little River area and the Canyon Creek and Blackland project area. And then as Council will recall, we are having a systematic approach to addressing sanitary sewer overflows in our community. And part of this involves assessments, individual basin assessments of our entire community. We have begun two of those assessments already and 2021 recommends funding for an additional two basins, and that being the Knob Creek and the Little Owl Basin. The 2021 budget also recommends two new solid waste routes. One is recommended as a residential route and one is recommended as a roll-off route. Council will recall that you funded a solid waste master plan last year and that, or this year in 2020, and that planning work is underway. We do have a placeholder in future parts of the financial plan, but this year, we're recommending to continue to move forward with an additional residential and roll-off route. In the focus area of public safety, as I mentioned last week or two weeks ago when we talked, we are really committed to continuing to focus on and build back up our proactive approach to community policing. We were fortunate to receive a grant to accelerate our investments in this area. We've been awarded a grant that will allow us to hire three officers. There is a cost share element for the city, part of that grant, and that is built into the FY 2020 budget as a recommendation that we move forward with these three additional officer positions and take advantage of receiving those grant funds. We're also recommending the addition of a school resource officer to serve the new Lake Belton High School campus. This position is funded, is recommended for funding in the, in the general fund, but also has partial revenue offset through an agreement with the ISD where they pay a portion of this officer's salary. The financial plan also, or I'm sorry, the annual budget has funding for one additional outdoor warning sirens in FY 2021. We're also recommending funding to upgrade the fire marshal position to an assistant fire chief position in 2021. And then we have several replacement programs that we've begun in the fire department for major purchases like our air packs, our cardiac monitors. And we, we are recommending to continue those replacement programs. So that, that funding is recommended to continue in the FY 21 budget. So those are the highlights of what is included in 2021. As a reminder, the overall proposed 2021 budget for all funds totals just under 170 million dollars, which represents a decrease from the adopted 2020 budget. This budget is supported by a tax rate of 67.27 cents. Based on the preliminary appraised value, we will receive our certified appraised role on July 25th.
Or before.
Or before.
I'll send that.
And that rate may be adjusted by the council after you receive that role. There are no rate or fee increases proposed for 2021. As a reminder for the rest of our schedule for this year, you do have a couple of action items on your agenda tonight. You have your first public hearing for the proposed budget. So I will give, I will plan to give a full presentation during your council meeting tonight. And then you'll have your first public hearing. And you will also need to schedule the public hearings on the proposed tax rate. Our recommendation is that one of those hearings be held on August 6th, which is a regular city council meeting. And the final reading or the final hearing on the proposed tax rate be held on August 13th, which would be the same day that we would propose approving the tax rate and approving the budget. And that would be a special call council meeting. That is a Thursday, but it's not a regular council Thursday. So with that, Mayor, can I pull that?
Counsel, if there's any questions?
Is he here? Graham, I think that satisfies my question to you yesterday.
I appreciate that, but I, so one thing that Susan asked for was a comparison of the proposed 20, or the adopted 2020 business plan and what's been shifted as a result. And I think that's an excellent suggestion that staff was already working on. So I will still provide that, that perspective for you because I think it's helpful for you to be able to have a chart that says what the resource was, when we originally planned it and what the new proposed business plan shows as it's scheduled here. So we are working on that and we'll have that very soon.
Excellent. That, that'll be wonderful for me. Thank you. When, when the August, what is the date we're doing?
Our recommendation would be that you schedule that the first tax rate hearing for August 6th, which is your next regular council meeting.
Right.
And then that the second hearing would be set for August 13th at 8:30 a.m. August 13th is a Thursday, but it is not a regular council day. So it'd be a special meeting. And the reason for that is when you back in all of the requirements from the charter and state law and the timing of when you have to, to do something by this point, but not before, not after, you just, you have to have a special meeting to meet all of the requirements. And just one, one final reminder, we still have budget workshops scheduled if needed. So if you have any specific topic that you'd like us to do a deeper dive on, please just let me know. I would request you let me know as soon as possible so we have time to prepare. But staff would be more than happy to present anything that you are interested in. Just let us know and we'll get that done.
Okay. Item number six is to receive a briefing from the city attorney on the draft TDC funding and operational agreement and a draft agreement with extra code for lease of land in construction of the downtown parking lot. And then item seven will be to receive a briefing from the city attorney regarding eight property situations in the Maxwell Marino survey after item 14, Belcali, Texas, that are necessary for the proposed expansion of Avenue C. Both of these items, due to the Texas government code section 551.071 allowed for executive session. And so we will go into executive session now to discuss items six and seven. Thank you all very much for your opinion.